All right, everybody, so I am going to start the meeting, the regular meeting of the Nishoba Regional School Committee tonight at six o'clock PM. I think that we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. So if you guys could all mute, feel free to stand and you can say it along with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So per the agenda, you know that we are going to head into executive session now, and I wonder if I could rely upon Mr. Horish for a motion?
Of course, I will move to go into executive session. Session A pursuant to Mass General Law Chapter 30A Section 21A 3 to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and the chair so declares. Unit A, Unit C, Session A to include school committee members, Superintendent Downing, Assistant Superintendent Friend, Director of Finance and Operations, Ross Malcaren, and Director of Human Resources, Anne Marie Stoica. And Session B pursuant to Mass General Law Chapter 30A Section 21A 2 to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel. Superintendent of Schools, Session B to include school committee members and Superintendent Downing. Meeting will resume in regular session at the conclusion of the executive sessions.
Thanks, Mike. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Scott. Any discussion on the motion?
Yeah. Wait, just for clarification, when Mike read the motion, there were two executive sessions. Our Superintendent, Superintendent Friend, Finance Director Malcaren, and Human Resources Director Stoica are going to be a part of both sessions?
It does not say so. Kirk, I'll lean on you for that.
I'm struggling with my technology. No, they will not be there for the second item, for item B.
Okay, thank you.
Great. All right, it looks like we're ready to take the vote. I vote yes. Scott?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Amy Cohen?
Yes.
Amy Vessels?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And I think that's everybody who I can see. Did I get everyone? Oh, I'm sorry. Shondor? Shondor?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, everybody, so we are in executive session. I'll just ask Nikki to stop recording if she was doing that.
Laura, Ross, and Anne Marie, if you want to jump back into the waiting room after you're done with your first session. And Kirk, I'm going to turn over the host to you if you can just text.
I'm just texting Alida and Kirk. Ah, there's Kirk. Great.
Leah, I'm so sorry. It didn't put me back in the waiting room. It threw me back in the meeting and I was like, ah!
That's totally fine.
So forgive me.
No worries. All right. Do we have Alida? Not yet. I just texted her. She's in charge of our minutes, so I'm just gonna wait one more minute for her if that's okay. There she is. Hi, Alida.
Hello.
All right, everybody. So we are back from executive session and we are now in, uh, back into the regular session of the Neshoba Regional School Committee meeting and we thought it appropriate to share with you the results of our session B from executive session. And if you wouldn't mind, I'd just like to simply replicate what was done in executive session in the regular session. And so I'm gonna make a motion that the school committee agree to a salary increase for our superintendent for the next school year at 3%.
I'll second that.
Thanks, Amy. And any further discussion? All right, we're gonna take a roll call vote on that. I vote yes. Amy Cohen?
Yes.
Karen?
Yeah.
Mike?
Yes.
Shondor?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Amy Vessels?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
Anne Marie?
Yes.
I think I got everybody there. All right, so I would just like to say a thank you to our superintendent. Uh, that salary increase is really, um, you know, well deserved. The work that you've put into our district is extraordinary and we are all very grateful to you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll take that as a recognition there. So, um, and, and I thank the committee. I love Neshoba. I love being here. I love the people I work with and, uh, so let's keep cooking.
Agreed. Uh, okay. So we're gonna keep going with our agenda here and, uh, the next item on the agenda is public comment. So I have received no public comment for our virtual meeting tonight, so we're gonna keep rolling to the consent agenda and I'm gonna turn to, uh, Mr. Horish for a motion.
Uh, all right. I'll move to approve the consent agenda of May 24th, 2023, containing the draft meeting minutes of May 10th, 2023 and the warrants of May 26th, 2023.
I'm gonna second that. Is there any discussion on these two items? Seeing now, we'll take the roll call. Mike?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Karen? Myself, yes. Karen?
Yep.
Care, uh, Amy Cohen?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Amy Vessels?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Sean Dore?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
And Maureen?
Yes.
All right, that's unanimous. Thank you very much. On the agenda, we have a school committee chairperson update, uh, which is no- nothing needs to happen there. Uh, so we're gonna keep going, and I can see that Hansi is here, and we are ready for our student representative report. Hi, Hansi.
Hi, everyone. So for today, it's pretty short, pretty simple. So starting with sports, all of our spring teams have qualified for the MIAA State Tournament, which begins next week, and our teams are finishing the regular season this week. The Boys and Girls Track Teams won the league championship last week, and members of both teams will be competing in the MIAA State Sectional Meet this weekend. Tonight, there's an art show and a choir concert, and next Tuesday, the the Vex Robotics team placed third in a recent competition at Oakmont High School, and this is different from our first robotics team. And we also had a very successful junior prom on May 30th at X Hall. That's all I have for tonight.
That's amazing. So many great things to report at the end of the school year here. Uh, does anybody have any questions for Hansi? As always, we appreciate you being here, so thanks for joining us. And
Thank you, everyone.
Best wishes for the, uh, great end of the school year.
Thank you. Bye.
I will add that, um, perhaps like some others of you who I just don't know about, Amy Vessel's daughter is highlighted in the art show tonight. Super proud of Haley. Uh, and we thank you, Amy, for being here. I know that Jeff is representing, so. Uh, moving on here, we have the superintendent's report, so I'm gonna turn it over to Kirk for a few updates.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have two pieces for you tonight, um, which you'll probably welcome after some of our lengthy, most recent reports to this committee. Uh, the first thing I would like to share is, uh, we're having, uh, a change in some structures at Florence Sawyer School. I'm bringing this to you tonight, even though, uh, this was put out to the community a while back. Uh, just wanted to make, had some questions come up recently about this, so I wanted to use this opportunity to share it with the community again. On April 7th, uh, Principal Bates announced a restructuring of the school with the addition of the dean position. Uh, Mr. Levine, uh, was happy to accept the appointment into the dean position, thus leaving an opportunity for us to do some grade level switches, bring kindergarten and first grade over to the Emerson Building to create an early childhood, uh, center there, which I think is really gonna help us with some of the efficiencies of our support staff and people, uh, that, uh, for, for, um, to work with students. And in doing so, uh, we were able to look for and, and find an assistant principal, um, who is, uh, going to be, have a primary focus while supporting the school, uh, uh, cross gates, grades K through eight will be supporting in grades K through two. And then, um, shortly thereafter, uh, uh, Ms. Caitlin Ngulo, Dr. Ngulo got, uh, uh, earned a position in another district, and we're gonna wish her well, and I think it's gonna meet, uh, her personal needs. Um, and so that is why we are looking for the second position for the assistant principal, uh, position at Florence Sawyer, of which we're currently in that search, and I know that Mr. Bates and I are, uh, screening around 15 candidates on Friday, uh, that'll be whittled down, uh, go through the interview processes, and ultimately, uh, selected. And before we move into the teaching and learning, I am, uh, happy to take any questions.
Any questions on the FSS reorg?
Kirk, I do have a question on, um, how, what, what drove the, um, decision to reorganize this, the grades? Was, did that come out of the strategic plan work or the visioning or?
Yeah, I, you know, this is a conversation I've been having with Mr. Bates really for over a year, and thinking about, uh, how we deliver our services and what our focus is. One of the things we noticed on our team is that, um, the administrators on our leadership team, uh, I am the only one that has early literacy experience as, uh, a teacher and administrator, and so this restructuring is giving us an opportunity to bring in a, a new person who, I, I'm not announcing tonight because I want to afford Mr. Bates the opportunity to make that announcement to his community at the end of the week. Um, and it's really gonna help us, particularly with our MTSS structures, uh, or in our data structures and our PLC structures that will really be able to tune in and focus. And we think it just makes good sense, and in, in the feedback that Mr. Bates has received from the community has been very positive. Um, and certainly with teachers, we know there's some work in terms of moving, uh, but Mr. Will Karen and, and Mr. Freezwick helped facilitate, uh, how to make that happen smoothly and quickly, um, uh, to help our teachers. So I think this is, this is gonna be a, this restructure, I think, is gonna be a, a great move for Florence Sawyer and give us that early childhood environment, uh, pre-K, K1, so we can limit the amount of transition students are having across the buildings, and then, of course, going up to the building, back to the building, that sort of thing. So I think this is gonna be good for us.
Yeah, I, I agree. I think it's a great thing, and, um, I thank you for, for, um, taking lead and making it happen, so.
Great.
Great. Any other comments about that? Seeing none, we'll move on to the next element of the superintendent's report.
Yes, uh, it was our hopes and dreams to get these to you just a tad bit sooner, but we have them now, and so I would like to turn it over to Assistant Superintendent Friend to talk to you about our front-facing curriculum guides, uh, Assistant Superintendent.
Great, thank you. My favorite topic, teaching and learning. Thank you. Um, so we are excited to share a sneak peek, um, because, um, we're, we still have editing, uh, and some revisions to do on our front-facing curriculum guide, so these are in draft form. They will be in final form by the end of the school year and ready for publishing on, uh, our website before the start of the school year. But as you're aware, we have been engaging in curriculum alignment and development work in grades six through 12 in our content areas, K to 12 and our related arts, K to five math. And so complementing that work, uh, our teachers have been working on the development of front-facing curriculum guides to share with families as an overview of the framework for learning in a given year and a, in a given discipline. Uh, I'd like to commend the efforts of our teachers, uh, in, in working on these along with Courtney Philbin and Laura Padignton, our curriculum directors, helping support that work. We're hopeful that these front-facing curriculum gu- guides will provide our families with an overview and a framework for learning, um, for their child in a given year and a given discipline and domain. In, in terms of the contents, as we've included in your packet and a link, um, to, um, the documents in terms of a, a sneak peek, um, we provided course descriptions. Um, and in many cases, these course descriptions are aspirational visions for what we hope and dream for learning, um, in that content area and in that grade level, um, or not quite there yet in all of our content areas in terms of our aspirational vision, but this is the work that we are engaging in right now and will continue to engage in robustly, uh, in the year ahead and, and as follows. Uh, as well as the course descriptions, these curriculum guides also include transfer goals, units of study, essential questions by units, and then the intentional integration of our Portrait of an Ashova graduate competencies within each unit. So these continue to be, uh, work in progress. Um, we're excited to share all of the curriculum guides, uh, that we have developed before the start of the school year on a new teaching and learning site on our new and updated website next school year. Um, so we're excited to, to launch that. Next year, our work with curriculum will continue as we work to really dig in on assessment. Um, we will continue to work on curriculum six, 12, K to 12 related arts, and we're going to work on the development of our front-facing curriculum guides for K to five, so for our elementary level and the core content areas, so that, that will be work that we will engage in next year. We're excited to share the work with you. I, I need to be honest and tell you that the team was nervous because they said that we still have, um, some revisions and some edits to go, um, with these, which we understand. Um, but we're excited to share the content with you, and please know that we're gonna continue to work on those so they're in tip-top shape to be shared with all of our families before the start of the school year.
And Ms. Friend, please thank them for us, because I, I, I know this meeting was our last opportunity to show that work, given the items on future meeting agendas, so thank you for, to them for, for doing that.
And, and we know that the work of curriculum, the work that we do with teaching and learning is always worthy, worthy of revision. We're never done. Um, and so I think this just speaks to that. So while we may go back in and, and, and do some final edits, um, and revisions, um, it's not a process that's static for sure. It's definitely a dynamic process. Thank you.
Great. Thanks so much, guys. I wonder if the school committee has any questions, anything that you would like more information on? All right, I know we're gonna talk more about curriculum later through Kirk's evaluation, so, uh, thank you now, Laura, for all of your hard work.
Thank you. Thanks to the teachers and to our team. Yeah.
All right, and I think that that wraps it up for the superintendent's report, Kirk?
It does. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Fantastic. So on we go to new business, and, um, we are looking to approve and take a vote on a new member of the school building committee. So perhaps I will hand this to Joe or Kirk, either one.
I defer to Mr. Gleason.
Oh, thanks, Superintendent Downing. Um, yes, Mr. Nicholson, uh, is a, uh, new, supposedly new member from uh, the town of Stowe. Uh, some of the older members of the committee will remember that his daughter used to be our, uh, school committee liaison. Uh, Mr. Nicholson, uh, brings an extensive amount of experience in building projects to the, uh, committee. He also sat on the, uh, the visioning team last, uh, week, a year ago, February. So, um, it is with a great amount of, uh, enthusiasm that I would simply move to approve Dan Nicholson as, uh, our fifteenth n- member of the school building committee.
I'll second that. Is there any discussion? All right, seeing, I don't think I see any, although, oh, I hear, I see Sharon's hand. Go ahead, Sharon.
I just have a question. Who's he replacing?
Uh, he, oh, that's a good question, Sharon. Um, he is actually replacing Mr. Rubenstein, who sat on the building committee not as a member of this district committee, but as a non-parent resident of the district. So Ms. Nicholson does not have any children in the school district this time, so we feel he qualifies for that position.
Very helpful. Any other discussion? All right, we, oh, is that Alita? Yeah, Alita.
Attorney Gleason, should I add that he's a voting member?
Yes, voting member. Yes, I'm sorry. I apologize. Yes, as a voting member. But we would assume that because he's from Stowe.
Yeah. All right, everybody, let's take the roll. I'll start with you, Joe.
Yes.
I say yes. Sharon?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Amy Cohen?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Amy Vessels?
Yes.
Sean Dore?
Yes.
Maureen?
Yes.
And Mike?
Yes.
I think I got everybody. Did I get you, Sharon? Yes, okay, good. All right, everybody, so we have, uh, I think what is a complete committee now, Joe, yeah? Well done. Well done. Thanks, Joe. Uh, he's running a tight ship over there, everyone, let me tell you. All right, moving on to our next matter of new business, this is going to be our CPAC presentation, and so we are looking to welcome our CPAC chairpeople into the meeting. And I think I do see Dana. Hi, Dana. Welcome. Welcome.
Hi.
And I think I saw Pam. There's Pam. Hi, Pam. So I will hand it over, I will hand it over to you guys, and you can take us away and help us understand what CPAC has been doing this year for our district.
All right. Can I share my screen so I can get the, um, PowerPoint up?
If you can, you are very welcome to do so. Let me know if it won't let you. Alita says you should be able to. I see it.
All right. It's short and sweet, everybody. All right, so, um, first slide. Okay. Um, so thank you for having us today. I really appreciate it, and sorry, I'm a little bit gravelly. Um, children are amazing carrier monkeys for viruses. Um, so hmm, that's where we are at the moment, but so Pam and I are, um, the co-chairs for this year, um, and, um, I don't know, Pam, um, so we co-chaired this year, and then our town reps, um, it was a little challenging this year to get people to actually, uh, join CPAC in all of these elected roles. Um, and it's something that we are going to be tackling over the summer, actually. Um, so we can actually have full representation from all of the towns. Um, so this year, our town rep we only had from Stowe was Lauren Flynn. And then the PTO liaison, um, again, only from Stowe was, uh, Caitlin Smith, and then our high school representative was Michelle, Michelle Powell of Stowe. So Stowe did, really showed up this year. I'm not sure why. Um, uh, it must be all those apples. Uh, and then, um, Pam was our social media manager, and, uh, Lauren Flynn ended up being our secretary. So we are gonna have some vacancies coming into this new school year. We just, um, voted on some stuff, but, um, Lauren and myself have children that are going to be going to Minuteman this fall. So we're trying to figure out what our role can be for CPAC next year, with Minuteman having its own, um, CPAC, so, um, there we go on that. Pam, did you wanna add anything to this? No, okay. All right, second slide. Maybe. Okay. Our goal for the year, um, is to work with the school committee, the superintendent, and the director of pupil, um, personnel services to develop a shared and concrete definition of CPAC's role and to determine how the CPAC operates with and within the district. This was our big goal this year because there was some questions that kinda came up throughout, um, the beginning of last year, or the end of last, last school year, and so we just really wanna make sure that we understood what our role is, that we understood what the school committee wanted from us, um, and also the director of, um, people services. So and the superintendent. Um, Pam, I know you've worked a lot on this. Do you wanna just give a quick one-minute thing so we stay in our time?
Yes, if I can unmute. Um, so yeah, so we, um, we met with, um, the director of pupil personnel services individually, uh, um, meaning Dana and I and, and just, um, Ms. D'Angelo's. Um, and then we had, um, a, a joint meeting with the superintendent and the director of pupil personnel services. And then we had another meeting with just the superintendent, and we also communicated with, um, our school committee liaison and, um, with the school, the, you know, kind of got some feedback from the, um, chair on how, uh, some discussions that she had had, uh, with the superintendent, and we basically focused, this is what, what our main focus was this year, was to just kind of, um, you know, get a better idea of, of where everybody saw us, and, um, I think we're still working on it, but we were really happy with how, um, every, every person that we opened, you know, we, we opened the door to, they opened the door back, so we're looking towards, um, continuing to work on a collaborative, um, working relationship between everything with CPAC and hoping that CPAC will, um, be a little more active this, this next school year.
Um, so these are some of the things that were established, um, this year. Um, I don't wanna like read everything verbatim. We can definitely share this presentation with all of you. Um, but, um, we worked on quite a bit of listening. We did a lot of listening from parents in the school and just to try to like fully understand, like, how can we help parents and guardians with their students, um, to make sure that they have the services that they believe that they need, that they actually need, and everybody understands the process of an IEP and a 504. And everybody understands the process of an IEP and a 504, um, because it can be a little daunting at times. Um, so one of the big takeaways that we learned this year um, that we are going to focus on next year for a goal is creating a um, guidebook, like a, a manual uh, of the IEP um, process and make it user friendly. Um, one of the big things that we heard from parents is that there's jargon, you know, that the teachers and staff are using that they don't necessarily understand. There's a lot of acronyms out there. Um, and so you can get into a meeting and then you, you realize you're not fully understanding um, everything. And you might be committing to something that you're not really a hundred percent sure on. Um, and then we want to work with the school committee on this manual, right? To make sure like, everything is good, that everybody's on the same page, that we, you understand what our goals are for parents and guardians and the students that are involved in this process. Um, so we do want to make it collaborative between school committees, superintendent's office, um, and the interim um, new director. So um, and Pam is going to be kind of like leading that charge for us this year, I think. Uh, and then next slide. Um, presentations this year, um, we outsourced a lot of these actually. And we're working in a collaboration with other CPACs and that also helps keep the cost down for us. But it also just allows these presenters to have really big um, impact. One of the big things that we want to be able to do next year is not just reach families that are on IEPs and 504s. A lot of these talks are great for parents in general. Um, so um, one of the big things, right? That helped, I think, um, was the collaborative problem solution solving workshop that um, is based on Dr. Ross Green's philosophy CPS. Um, out of, um, he's out of Maine and I think there was actually a workshop earlier this year that the special ed teachers and the pairs and stuff attended, you know, that follows the same philosophy. But it's a philosophy that all parents can benefit from, right? And also like ADHD, not all kids uh, who have ADHD are on 504s or IEPs. And so we're trying to empower parents um, across the board. Um, and because when we do that, it also helps the classroom and helps the kids um, and, and, and everything. So it was a pretty good turnout for most of these. Next year, we plan on doing um, more in-person hopefully talks. We want to get, you know, how to get your kids moving, right? Like, how do you get kids to exercise if they don't want to do sports? Um, talking about anxiety, talking about mental health. Um, and then we also want to have a workshop on um, caregiver fatigue. You know, parents, how can we support parents better? Um, so they can then, you know, better support their students. Um, so that's another thing that we're going to be looking into next year. Pam, did you have anything you'd like to add on this one?
Um, yeah, I just wanted to add that um, what also came out of our meetings with um, the superintendent and um, the director of people personnel services was um, being able to add um, CPAC events to the superintendent's um, weekly common. Um, and what that really helped us to do and also that the principals were um, sharing out information about our presentations. We forgot to include on this slide that the ADHD um, presentation had a total of two hundred and ten attendees. And a hundred and seven of those attendees were from Nishoba. So, and we shared that, as you can see, we co-sponsored that with um, North, South Borough and Shrewsbury. But um, but we were, we were about half of the attendees and a lot of those that attended that were not CPAC um, families. So uh, it just goes to show like what Dana was saying that um, that what we're, the presentations that we're putting together, uh, more families than just the CPAC um, families can benefit from this.
Next year's goals. Um, we want to improve communication and transparency between the district and the parents and guardians. Um, and so as I was saying, we want to develop a user-friendly special education process guide. Um, this is one of the big things that we are hearing from parents um, and that we've um, talked to Kirk about a couple of times um, is just, you know, and it's not, it's not meant to be twenty pages, right? It's like a two pager. Like, this is what's happening. These are the services that, you know, are available. And the big question is, is whose responsibility is it to get the IEP 504 process started? Is it the parents? Is it the school? We want to be able to have those answers for everyone. So if you're seeing something, um, then you can ask the teacher. You can ask your principal, right? Um, a lot of parents, you know, come in and say, I, I, we don't know what, you know, dyslexia looks like or dysgraphia looks like. How am I supposed to know that, right? Um, or if your child is having trouble with peer-to-peer interactions, it could be, you know, something else. It could be ADHD. It could be autism related. Um, and if you don't have those diagnoses and you're hearing that, what does that mean, right? And so what we were trying to do is just help parents get the services that they need or inside the school district or even outside, right? The outside available resources. Um, and then, you know, when you go through the IEP 504 process, what does, you know, what and what is, what does it entail? Um, and then when you have to transition. So we want to make sure that we have a one-stop shop basically for everyone to understand what um, Nishoba is doing for our students, for our parents, for the educators. Um, so it's more of a collaborative process. We don't want friction, you know? I don't think anybody wants that. Um, because at, at the heart of it, at the end of the day, we're all here for the kids, right? We want to make them happy, successful, educated adults um, in the future. So, um, but that starts now. So, I don't know, Pam, do you have anything else you'd like to add on this one? All right. I guess, I think we had time for questions, maybe? I'm not sure, but.
You did fantastic. Thanks so much, Dana.
All right.
And thanks Pam. Yeah, that was uh, very informative and that presentation is in the meeting materials. So everybody does have access to it and we're grateful for you uh, collating all of the great work you've done this, this year. And we're grateful for you, to you and all the people on your, on the CPAC for, for showing up, for doing the work and for trying to build that collaborative partnership.
Thank you.
Definitely have time for a few questions and I'll let the school committee throw their hands up. I see Amy is first.
Thanks. Um, how are those vacant seats um, advertised? Like, what's the process for running for one of those spots?
So that's a great question. So one of the things that we are trying to do is, so CPAC, if your, if your child is on an IEP or 504, there is an email that goes out um, specifically to those parents and guardians, right? And then if we want, we need to like ask to be put into the, the common um, for the superintendent one. And so communication, which we are working with Kurt on, um, on how to get all of that out there, right? So instead of like in five different spots, how can CPAC get that information out to everyone that we have these open spots? Because a, a, an officer spot is open to anyone in the district. You do not have to have a child on a 504 or an IEP to serve on it. Um, and so we also use Facebook um, quite a bit um, to get the word out. Um, but then everything else goes through email through the school district itself, because we actually don't control the list. That is all through the district.
Great. Go ahead, Maureen.
I have a question. I'm wondering what role is CPAC going to play in um, potentially play in the search for the new director of pupil services?
I would love to say a huge one, but I understand, you know, like the search committee and everything will, you know, will come down to like Kurt and, and the rest of the team, you know, that will be doing the hiring process. Um, that was actually probably topic number one, right after that email went out. Um, for CPAC members, um, there, there are parents that would like to be involved in that process. And so I think we're just waiting for some direction on this. Um, but it's actually one of the things that Pam and I would um, more actually going to talk to Kirk about.
We have a meeting set up. Yeah, we have a meeting set up to speak with Kirk directly.
Yep, yes.
Great. Yeah, I'll throw it over to Kirk.
As a matter of fact, I reached out to Ms. Duggan the day after the announcement.
Yeah.
So we'll be in a planning process around that.
Great.
We are very appreciative to be included in the process. Thank you, Kirk.
You bet.
All right, any other questions for our CPAC members? And I just want to say thank you to Karen for being um, a really great liaison this year. Karen has been in the loop on all of our emails and a part of the conversation. So we are definitely here for you guys and we look forward to continuing the partnership into the next year, if, if not with you specifically. Um, you know, obviously life has to take its natural course, but uh, we want to keep CPAC uh, very close as our advisory. Um, so thanks guys for coming in and sharing with us.
No, thank you for having us today. I really appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you Karen and everybody. Appreciate it.
Leah, can I just say something quickly?
Yeah, please.
Uh, I just, I, I think you guys have done a fabulous job this year and it's been um, I'm more than happy to, to be the liaison. I apologize I haven't made more meetings. I always try and then something always gets in the way, so I apologize. But um, but uh, you've been great on email too, just to throw things out there and um, so anytime. So thank you.
All right, guys. Thanks again. We appreciate your time. All right, everybody. So we're going to move on to our next uh, agenda item and that is another presentation for another advisory that we're really excited to hear from and that is Dear J. And you guys can see that we have members of Dear J entering the meeting here. And I am going to start with Ms. Lori Burnett. Hi Lori.
Hello. Thank you so much for having us here tonight. It's great to see everybody. Um, we're, we're the Diversity Equity Awareness and Racial Justice Advisory. We're also called Dear J. Um, is really excited to be here and present to you what um, we've been working on this year. So thanks for your time. Um, as Leah said, I'm Lori Burnett. Um, I wanted just to start by providing maybe a brief background of what Dear J is for those of you who uh, knew each the committee. Um, very briefly, back in January of twenty twenty-one, at the request of the Nishoba Regional School Committee, Dear J first convened to discuss how, discuss how we could support the school committee and the district and their commitment and responsibility around interracial, inclusion and belonging, particularly as envisioned in the district's mission and vision statements and in the school committee's anti-racism resolution. And um, over the course of the first four months of convening, we had a group of over forty alumni, staff, students, parents and community members who met to discuss the role of Dear, of Dear J and our goals. Um, since this kind of intensive and extensive gathering of stakeholders, the school district, as everybody knows, has already engaged in its own comprehensive strategic planning process. And so the following, the presentation that's going to follow really describes the work that's born from the voices and learning um, that occurred during both the DRJs and the school district strategic planning process, um, as well as the work that's happened since um, those plans were, were completed. Um, so I want to now just take a brief moment to introduce um, the Dear J members from this past year, twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three. Um, I feel so exceedingly fortunate to work with such amazing people. Um, and um, I'm not sure if our slide sharing is going, but hopefully everybody got our um, our packet as well. But our members this year who have given an incredible amount of time, um, include.
Lori, can I interrupt? Can I interrupt you really quick? I don't see the slide sharing. Are you guys sharing the, the presentation or do you want to do that?
Um, Kelly was going to try to, but if it's not working, if you can, Leah, that's awesome either way.
I am just, oh, if you would like to Leah, you certainly can. I was just trying to open my Zoom settings. So if you want to do it, that would be great. Or maybe Alita, do you think you're better equipped? Can you do it, Alita? Yeah.
Okay, Alita, if you do, we can give you a little, tell you when to move on and make it a little easier.
And it is definitely in the meeting materials. So we have access to that.
Okay, so I'll, I'll keep going. Um, but we're on the second, I'm just on the second slide which lists um, all our members who've contributed a lot of time this year. Um, that includes Elizabeth Bendler, Lindsay Shavs, Realist Christopher, Calvin Cochrane, Leah Cullenane, Kelly Lawler and Carla Zills. Um, Lindsay, Leah and Kelly are here with us tonight and you'll be hearing from them. Um, unfortunately, um, Elizabeth and Calvin were um, unable to join us tonight. Um, so I wanted just to give a huge thank you to Elizabeth for putting the slides together. And also for Calvin, who is um, a graduating, graduating from Nishoba this year. So it's really exciting and a big applause to him. Um, finally, and very importantly, before passing on to Lindsay, I just want to extend, um, so I'm on the third slide now, Alita. Uh, I just want to extend, you know, our, our great gratitude for um, Superintendent Downing, um, Assistant Superintendent Friend, Ms. Asterson and the school committee member Sharon Park for your ongoing support, contributions and investment in Dear J and our vision and our values and partnering with us as we evolve and grow. Um, and you know, as Lindsay, Leah and Kelly will share in more detail in their work, um, you know, this, we really see this as a partnership. Um, we're here to work together. Um, we see this as a learning community where we all, you know, where we all feel we can belong. And as the mission statement says, you know, be our best selves, pave our, pave our path and impact the world. We just feel, we feel exceedingly important, um, you know, fortunate to be a part of the Nishoba community. And so with that, I will pass it on to you, Lindsay.
Thank you Lori and good evening, everyone. Um, like Lori said, I'm also very honored to be a member of this amazing group of committed volunteers. Um, and I think we can all agree that we're striving to work with our school district to ensure that we have equitable public education experiences for all of our schooler, uh, scholars as well as all of our stakeholders. So I'm really excited to be here. Um, I am going to share with you our mission and vision, which has been crafted and recrafted several times. Um, after bringing in and listening to many different voices. Um, a mission and vision that we think and feel strongly is aligned with the district's mission and vision as well as the strategic plan laid out, um, as well as our group's values and priorities. Um, and that's why we've done a lot of intentional work um, to revise it as we feel um, is necessary. So with that said, I will share our vision. Our vision is on slide four. We envision a district where students of all races, ethnicities, sexual orientations, gender id- identities, religious affiliations, neurotypes, physical abilities, nationalities, incomes, languages and bodies belong and are able to realize their unique potential as active contributors to their community. And I'll, Kelly, if we can move on to our mission. Um, our mission is to continually support and educate the Nishoba Regional School District and school committee in its work to ensure that diversity, equity, inclusion and belonging are embedded within our systems, policies and practices for all stakeholders. Excellent. So we're moving on and I'm not sure if you all are also Um, with our work, we try to ground our efforts in equitable principles, focusing on actively challenging bias and promoting intersectionality. And with our work, we try to ensure our initiatives align and integrate well with the strategic objectives outlined by the district, um, which I mentioned earlier as well. And with our work, we try to seek guidance and insight from the many diverse communities. Um, who have demonstrated impactful change and we have data to support that. Um, with our work, we try to act in an advisory capacity with our goal of increasing voices that are under recognized within our community. And that's something that we keep at the forefront as we're navigating all the work we're doing as a committee. Um, we have accomplished an immense amount of work over the last few years. And tonight, we're just going to highlight the work we accomplished as a team this school year. Um, in spirit, in the spirit of providing kind of a concise report this evening, we've divided our work into the following six categories and there will be um, a representative from our team that will present the specific um, goals and tasks that we worked on and or completed this year and or are continuing. So um, our six categories are DRJ foundations, equity audit, DRJ website, district calendar, professional development and decision-making. District Calendar, Professional Development and Decision-Making Tool. And with that, I will now pass the baton to, back to Lori Burnett for DRJ Foundations.
All right, great. I will be brief on this. This is sort of a work ever-evolving process. This year, we have worked to sort of define and refine our how. We've piloted meeting structures that increase inclusivity, that are learning-focused, data-informed, and efficient, and then incorporate community input. So that's sort of a constant process. We want to be modeling what we're hoping for. We have clarified our individual roles and responsibilities and kind of created a structure for our working groups so we can bring in different voices and also manage our volunteer time. We have continued to work on what we've been calling our guiding document, which hopefully will make easily accessible our past, present, and future work, provide links, and show our priorities, and provide links to the subcommittee work we're doing, as well as our mission, vision, and values. And just to circle back, basically, you know, we recognize we are learning and growing with you all and with the district, and so this process is ever-evolving. And with that, I will pass it on to Leah.
Thank you, Lori. The Equity Audit. We participated in the first round of analysis of the received proposals, applied and elevated concepts from our mission statement, worked collaboratively with a team of stakeholders. Next slide. The DRJ Website. We're currently developing a website to be housed within the NRSC area of the NRSD website. We have goals of communicating priorities, ongoing transparency, and improving community outreach. Kelly?
Hi, thank you very much for having me. Kelly Lawler, resident of Stowe. So this year, along with last year, we continued to work on ways that the district calendar can can continue to focus on culture and belonging in, within the calendar and the days that are represented on the calendar that reaches out to the entire community. So we really want to make sure that it's truly inclusive. So our group has researched, you know, thirty different schools and towns locally around Nishoba Regional. And what we came up with were some recommendations that we put together in January of 2023. And we started to meet with the Calendar Committee. We had really good conversations with the Superintendent and the Calendar Committee, and we were able to meet with them before they brought the calendar to the school committee in March. And so we are going to continue this work. We made a lot of changes to make sure that more cultures and religious observances are recognized, but we still have more work to do in that area when we look at ways that other schools are pushing belonging and culture more on their calendar so that there's more of a welcoming community that we have. We can kind of spread that message. And then Professional Development. So I, along with Lindsay, we were able to conduct a district-wide session entitled Culturally Responsive Teaching during the March Professional Development Day at Nishoba Regional High School. We curated a list of resources focusing on culturally responsive teaching and practices. And what was really great, you know, we were in a classroom with fifteen to twenty teachers, and Lindsay and I were able to share some things that have worked for us on the ground level because we both have, you know, fifteen-plus years of teaching experience. So it was really nice for teachers to ask us questions, to kind of talk about different pedagogies and mindsets that we're all bringing into the classrooms to meet the needs of all of our learners, because we know that's the most important thing that we do here at Nishoba. And back to Lindsay.
Thank you, Kelly. Lastly, we wanted to share information about a decision-making tool that we have really spent quite a bit of time researching and discussing. And we all know that really, in order to eliminate disparities and close community opportunity gaps and really improve outcomes for everyone, we need to work intentionally to lift and improve the outcomes of all of our underserved and underrepresented populations. So with that said, this group has been working on researching different decision-making tools that we hope different stakeholders can use within the district as they make decisions around systems and policies and practices, and as those are developed and reviewed and revised. We think that such protocol would really provide a structure for ensuring that equity is at the center of the process of making and implementing and addressing these systems and practices and policies. And it's easy to lose sight of that, and we thought such tool could be used, you know, with the school committee or through the school district or in faculty groups or whatever it may be, to ensure that that is central to the work we're doing and that we've taken that lens and worn that hat to ensure the best outcomes for all of our scholars. Which brings us to our final slide to share some of our ongoing work that we hope to focus on next year. Some of it, like I said, is ongoing in a continuation of this year, and some of it, we're looking to delve in further for the first time. Obviously, we want to support the Equity Audit in any way possible, both communication and also just kind of as information is received, how it's shared with the community, and be present throughout that process. Secondly, in terms of community participation, we want to think about creative ways to continue to ensure that as we're working and informing our work that we do have diverse voices and perspectives that are informing and guiding our work. As Kelly mentioned, with curriculum and PD, we want to, and we know there's a lot of exciting curriculum work happening within the district, so this is wonderful. But we want to ensure that equitable practices are kind of, again, central to both teacher learning as well as student learning, and continue our work there. I just spoke to the decision-making tool, and our hope, like I said, is to strive on and agree upon a final recommendation for a tool and work to ensure that folks are trained and that we calibrate so that the tool is utilized in a way that it's intended to. As also, we've mentioned around the calendar and handbooks, I think this is a perfect example of where that decision-making tool could live, right, during the revision of a handbook, because we know that our policies can have inequitable outcomes and for all of our students, depending on how they're written, right? So, and lastly, but certainly not least, Dear J as advisors, we truly want to find a way next year to participate within your subcommittees as a school committee to help elevate and center equity for all of our scholars and all the work that you do and we do and everyone does within the district. So we really look forward to partnering with you more, and we can't be, we aren't, we are certainly so thankful for all of your participation and thoughts and the work, again, of the folks that have been supporting us. So thank you. And I think, Leah, do we have time for any questions or comments?
Definitely. That was such a fantastic presentation. Thank you all. So well organized. It's clear you guys are working so hard for the district. We really appreciate it. Does anybody have any questions about what you just heard, or perhaps projecting forward? Remember that Dear J is our advisory, although they do have kind of a parallel path where they're also working with, on the operational side of things, with Kirk. I see Amy Vessels. Go for it.
So maybe I missed this, but are you working then with, do you have conversations with the administration at the different schools as they work to revise their handbooks each year?
Thank you, Amy, for that question. So that is a new project for next year. Our initial conversation has been primarily with the high school, and so we had, we've had an exchange with the high school principal to work with, start there with the high school next year. So that's our sort of first step in that space.
Great. That seems like a great initiative, too. I see, maybe Amy Cohen?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank the Dear J for, you know, the work that went into the presentation and the initiatives that you've set for yourselves for next year. I think that the work that you're doing is really important, and it was work that needed to be done. And I'm so excited to see where it goes and the impact that it has on our students. So, thank you.
Thanks, Amy. Over to Mike.
Yeah, thank you for the presentation. That was great. I'm wondering if you, I know that DRJ has a presence as an advisory, but I wonder if DRJ has kind of a passive representation to other events around the community where you're not necessarily the centerpiece of a conversation, but you are sort of in tune with the attitudes, opinions, and perspectives that kind of orbit the district, that are kind of related to the towns and the district.
Yes, thanks, Mike, for that question. We definitely hope to increase that in our work, but we do have partnerships, and part of our meetings each week is to hear what is happening from, within the community. We have members from the Nishoba Area Social Justice Alliance, which is an organization that covers all three of our communities who participate both on this committee and who also have members that are involved in many other community events that we have a connection and provide, I guess, hear from them and also share with them. So it's a, it's a sort of integrated partnership as well. And if anybody else has something, anything else to add there?
Yeah, I think we're just kind of doing some work around how can we be better with outreach? And that's, you know, where Ms. Cullenane has come in, and she's done a great job helping us to think about our website and our messaging and our vision, and what are ways that we want to express ourselves on the website? And then also, how can we be more involved within the community and bring them to more school committee meetings?
And the website is something that is forthcoming, right? It is about to be launched?
Yes, we're in the process of finalizing, and we're almost ready to post it.
Awesome. I love a good website. Any other questions for Dear J? I would just wrap by saying that I feel like when Dear J was created, we knew that we desperately needed it. You guys all stepped up and put in your time, and at times, you felt like you were maybe spinning your wheels a little bit. And then I feel like when Kirk came on board, that everything started clicking with the strategic plan. And now you are really getting traction, it seems to me. Your purpose is clear. You have these initiatives that are real, they're meaningful, they're relevant. They're going to have impact on kids and families, so I love it, and I really appreciate it. So thanks, guys. Great work.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Madam Chair.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would be remiss if I didn't offer my gratitudes to these wonderful people here as we partnered this year on all the activities. I won't repeat what they said other than just to offer my gratitudes and thanks. I will single out Ms. Cullenane, however, as a representative of our district equity committee. She has been a valuable main member of Dear J as well. We look forward to growing in the work.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone. Appreciate your time. Thanks, Lori. Bye, guys. We're lucky to have such great people around us looking to help and just giving all of their time, so it's pretty awesome, just like all you. So let's keep moving, guys. Our next item on the agenda here is Finance and Operations. And so I will turn it over to Kirk, who will probably turn it over to Ross.
I would like to introduce Mr. Ross Mulcaren, our Director of Finance and Operations.
Thank you, and thank you to the committee for the opportunity to update you on the April FY23 operations report. And as always, thank you to the Budget and Warrant Subcommittee, as I think most often are able to bring drafts of this report to them ahead of time for their questions, and perhaps helps me think about our practices. So thank you to them. So presented this evening is the FY23 April Operations Report. I'm going to signal sort of like the total on the bottom line here as a beginning point. As you can see, last year at this time, our projected balance was approximately $965,000. We know that this ultimately ends up becoming our E and D number at the end of the year, in which we certified at 1.49 million. So I'm paying close attention to the processes that Ms. Maroni used as my predecessor at the end of the year here, as we build a signal to the committee of what our potential E and D balance would be, that we'd be putting forward for certification through the Department of Revenue. Currently, we're projected at 1.3 million. Again, as I've explained, I think throughout the school year, the majority of that is built off of our salary savings surplus through our enrollment standards and other things that happen, such as hiring somebody who's newer to the profession. As we say farewell to a more senior-tenured teacher that may have retired at the end of last year or over the summer. We're, again, continuing to closely watch the facilities line, where we should be done, heating our buildings and wrapping up that. So our impact on the facilities line through the heating oil is not as, not as as impactful as it possibly could have been. I'll get the final usage of gallons from Rob Frieswick over the next several weeks here as we take a look at what we came in at for usage. We know that we're impacted by a significant increase in oil. Another piece of this, though, is we have to watch our delivery charges that we may get on our electricity, even though that we are still within a contract. So that's something that we're watching as we head into the warmer months of the end of May at least, and also June. Other than that, we're feeling like we're in a pretty good position as far as what our projections are and understanding where things are at at this point. And principals are aware that we don't need to be buying next year's supplies with this year's money, so they know that anything that's coming forward to me in the form of a requisition will be scrutinized, as it always is. But we are obviously willing to support and provide whatever our students and teachers need that's necessary through the end of the school year here. Mrs. Friend and I have been talking closely a little bit about some of her needs as the year closes out, because even after we say goodbye to our students and they get on the buses, we still have professional development through Summer Academy that's happening for our staff. So we have to be cautious and thoughtful about what those possible expenditures look like. Thank you.
Excellent. Thanks, Ross. Does the committee have any questions about the operations report? Mike, Budget and Warrant has had the chance to review this?
Yes.
Okay. Great. All right, seeing no questions, perhaps we move on to your next item, Ross? Or maybe it's to Kirk, the OED grant?
Madam Chair, this is once again an item I'd like to turn over to Mr. Mulcaren. He signaled to the committee at the last meeting that he would be bringing this forward, so. Mr. Mulcaren?
Yeah, so just, I want to just quickly, and I know we're doing great on time this evening, so quickly refresh the committee's collective memory regarding Policy DD. Mr. Simon was astutely sort of in detail on when he did his training and brought that forward as a possible need for us. Even though the district has not done this before, we're going to be making sure that we bring grants to the committee ahead of time as much as possible. Some of these grants are going to be competitive, others will be allocation grants, such as our title grants, where we're given our allocations, and then it's up to us to decide how we may use that allocation. In this case, you know, this is our first pass-through of this grant template being brought forward to the committee. Again, I thank the Budget and Warrant Subcommittee that gave me their time in feedback as we crafted this to keep it simple and straightforward. So in this case, Assistant Superintendent Friend had already brought forward the information in sort of the color around this grant to understand it, and this is strictly the budget piece. So you'll see that Courtney Philbin, who's our Director of Math- And this is strictly the budget piece. So you'll see that Courtney Filman, who's our Director, um, of Math and Science, uh, had done the, um. The legwork on this and presented the grant to us. Uh, the grant title is the Open SIAID Equitable Instruction Initiative Grant. It was competitive, we had to apply, it has begun technically, um, and it goes on until March of, uh, twenty-six. So as Assistant Superintendent, uh, Friend explained two weeks ago, uh, with regards to the purpose of it. Uh, you can see the total grant allocation is twenty-three thousand seven hundred dollars. Um, just about half of it is being spent on the kit funding and the other half is being spent on the PD. Uh, to expand these practices in accordance with our strategic plan and the curriculum work that's being done out of teaching and learning.
Excellent. Thanks, Ross. Uh, we are gonna take a motion on this, but before we do, any clarifying questions? Ross, this template is something that we're gonna see, um, for all future grant awards.
Yes, that's correct. So, you know, we may make some adjustments, but in, in essence, it should stay the same. Uh, so we have a standardized practice of bringing these grants to you. Sometimes we'll be able to do a little bit more detail around the explanation. Other times it'll be more of a, um. Straightforward grant, um, but again, according to Policy DD, we do need to present these to you prior to expenditure.
Excellent. This is fantastic. Uh, Mike?
Yeah, I, I, I was just gonna say that. I mean, I think these templates are great and this is really just another level of, um. Demonstrating the district's transparency on grants and expenditures, so. Kudos. I, I, I love this. Thank you.
Maureen?
Um, my question is on, I, I know it says it's a competitive grant, but it's just for Luther Burbank? Is, is that correct? And then if so, I have a follow-up on that.
So correct. This is supporting the work at Luther Burbank right now, and then Mrs. Frank could probably do a better job than I could with my. Memory, um, as she's more entrenched in this work than I am.
Got it. So then my follow-up would be, and this is kind of the theme that I have across. Budgets at this point, um, is how? How are we making sure that's equitable across all of the schools?
Kirk, do you want? Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Maureen.
So if they're getting, if Luther Burbank's getting this twenty-three thousand seven hundred dollars. Put in specifically for Open Science Ed, um, how, how does? How will the other two middle schools get that same su- support, I guess, to be equitable?
Great question. I think either Kirk or Laura?
Yeah, I'll bring in Assistant Superintendent Friend for that.
Thank you. Um, so great question, and I would say that, uh, Open SIAID will be implemented at all three middle schools. Equitably, um, beginning next year and that the support through this grant will just help support and supplement the funding. For what we are purchasing as a district. The allocation for Luther Burbank Burbank was a result of, uh, the, um. Percentage of students who are economically disadvantaged. At Luther Burbank and that, that's what allowed us to qualify for the competitive aspect of this grant to help support the funding. For Luther Burbank and supplement the funding that we're receiving. However, the implementation of Open SIAID is district-wide, six through eight for all students. This grant is just supplementing the support of the purchase for Open SIAID. And it's allocated for Burbank, but district-wide, all of our students will be receiving the same experience. If that makes sense.
I, I think I understand that. Yeah, thank you.
Great. That's fantastic. Thanks. Um, maybe, Mike, we're ready for a motion if you feel ready. Did I lose Mike? No, I didn't. Oh, there you are.
No, you didn't. It's just that my microphone was off.
Okay.
Um, I am going to, uh, move to accept the Open Science Ed Equitable Instruction Initiative, the OEI grant in the amount of. Twenty-three thousand dollars, twenty-three thousand seven hundred dollars for expenditure as presented in accordance with the School Committee Policy DD.
I'll second that. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll take the vote. I vote yes, Mike?
Yes.
Amy Cohen?
Yes.
Uh, Amy Vessels?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Shondor?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
And Maureen?
Yes.
Awesome. Thank you so much for, uh, building that out for us, everyone. Appreciate it. All right, so we are cruising along here on our agenda. Our next item, we're moving over to unfinished business and it looks to me like we have five votes that are queued up for us tonight. All right, so we're gonna begin with the first one, which is the NRHS Graduation Credit Requirement. And if the committee has no objection, I'm gonna go right to Mr. Horish for each one. He can put a motion on the table. And then we can discuss if needed. Uh, Mike, what do you have for us?
Sure. Um, I'll move to increase the Nishoba Regional High School Minimum Credit Requirement by graduation to twenty-five credits.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Sharon. Any discussion on this matter?
Yeah, I, isn't it, uh, is that worded correctly? Twenty-five credits, isn't that per year or something?
Hold on.
I think he, the motion says, I mean, like twenty-five credits to graduate. That, that can't be right.
Ah.
Right.
Yeah, I think that.
I'm just calling, that should be per year, so.
Uh, Mike, would you mind amending that motion?
Sure, yeah.
To include language that it's twenty-five credits per year?
Sure. So just, we, just restate the motion?
You would move to increase the Nishoba Regional High School Minimum Credit Requirement for graduation to twenty-five credits per year?
Okay, so moved.
Okay, and then Sharon, um, do you accept that friendly change?
Yes.
Or you seconded? All right, any, uh, thanks for that, Amy.
Thank you, Amy.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll take the vote. Karen?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Maureen?
Yes.
Shondor?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
Amy Vessels?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Amy Cohen?
Yes.
And Mike?
Yes.
All right, fantastic. Uh, thank you for that, Kirk, and bringing, uh, you know, we're doing that good work. To keep us in compliance. Uh, we are gonna move over to our next item here in unfinished business and that is the approval of the NRHS Student Handbook for School Year twenty-three, twenty-four, and I'll turn to Mr. Horish for a motion.
I'll move to approve the Nishoba Regional High School S, uh, twenty-three, twenty-four school year handbook as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Sharon. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll take the vote. Mike?
Yes.
Amy Cohen?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Shondor?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
Amy Vessels?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Maureen?
Yes.
Excellent. That motion passes unanimously again. And moving over to the next item of unfinished business, this is a motion to amend the school year twenty-three, twenty-four calendar. Uh, before we take the motion, though, is everybody? I, this, this thing is so meticulous, it's so detail-oriented. I'd hate to take the motion and then find that there are. Things you want to change. Is everybody cool with it? Everybody's all right? Amy?
Um, I had reached out to Leah. About just making sure that the last day of school is noted as a half day, so I just want to make sure that's. Um, included. I, I don't see it on the posted. Wait, am I missing it? Yeah, I don't think it's on the posted meeting materials, but I know that you said that. That change will be taken care of, so as long as that's. Taken care of, then I have no further changes.
So Kirk, or, uh. I know that we talked about changing that last day to be marked as a half day. I don't know that the posted materials show it. Uh, Emery, go, uh, maybe.
Later in the, in the second column, um, it's, um, it's red and bold, the last day of school will be an early release day. Of course, the last day of school, we don't know because it will depend on, um, on the snow, but, um. But there it is.
Thank you.
The other couple of changes, do you want to hear those or no?
Uh, no, I think we covered them last time, right? Nothing's been different. Or hasn't, has anything been different, Emery?
Just the, um, the, uh, elimination of the late starts at the high school for professional development. Um, based on the discussion last time, uh, and then Alita put a red text bubble, um, on the pre-K only, um. Conferences, the bright yellow and at the end of February and early March. So they'd pop.
Ha, ha. Love it. Okay.
So I apologize, I totally missed the red and bold text. I was looking for cut the yellow, um, uh, you know. Showing half day, so sorry about that.
Yeah, this thing is a beast. Uh, I missed it too. Thanks, uh, Emery. Uh, Shondor, did you have something?
Uh, I'm just trying to understand the November tenth, uh, holiday. What that is?
Oops, I'm on the wrong year.
I believe it's Veterans Day.
That, that's right.
But that's the eleventh.
Right, but of course it's celebrated because the eleventh is a Saturday. So when holidays fall on a Saturday, we celebrate them the day before.
Okay.
Looking perhaps for a motion at this point, Mike?
Uh, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Uh, so I'm voting on the, um. The amendment, is that right? The, the revision?
Yeah, the revised calendar.
I'll move to approve the revised, uh, twenty-three, twenty-four school year calendar as presented.
I'll second that. Any discussion? Seeing none, let's take the vote. I vote yes. Maureen?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Amy? Vessels?
Yes.
Amy Cohen?
Yes.
Excuse me, Shonder?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And Sharon?
Yes.
Fantastic. Thank you so much, Emery, for sticking with that. Woo, it's a tough job. Somebody's gotta do it. Uh, but now we go to the next one. And, uh, this is for the school year twenty-four, twenty-five calendar. This is a brand new vote. We're not revising anything here. This is the first vote that we're taking on this second calendar. Emery, did you want to weigh in here at all?
I do, because there are a couple of changes and differences in the calendar. It's before you tonight and the one that you saw at the, at the last meeting. Like the calendar we just discussed, we removed the high school late starts for professional development from the one that's before you tonight. Again, we notated that the last day of school, um, will be, uh, an early release day. It's in the same spot, but it's in, it's not all caps. And again, we don't know a date for that because that will be subject to how many snow days we have. We also did the, um, uh, the far right column, the pre-K to eight, and we, Alita put her little bubble on those bright yellow days, um, in March to. Make sure that all the parents know that it's only the pre-K to K that are, that have got the conference half day that day. We corrected two of the dates in the bottom right-hand corner where it says high school quarters. We moved by a day or two, that the end of the second quarter and the end of the third quarter. From January twenty-two to twenty-four and from April three to four. There had been a, underneath, uh, March, April, May, there had been a typo. Um, T H A R, which is now that instead of thar. Um, and still, but still unresolved, because it's not yet been, um, we still don't, don't have a, a date for that, um. State primary in September, so we're gonna probably need to come to you when that's finalized. Those are the, that's, other than that, it's the same calendar as you had two weeks ago.
All right. Any? Any clarifying questions before we take a motion? Mike?
I just want to be clear that because this is such a, I mean, this is a twenty-four, twenty-five calendar, this could come. Back to the committee for future revisions as necessary, correct?
Yes, and it almost definitely will when that state primary date is finalized.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, so I think. Everybody might be ready to take a vote, so Mike, I'll have a motion if you have it.
I'll move to approve the twenty-four, twenty-five school year calendar as presented.
I'll second that. Any discussion? All right, seeing none, we'll take the roll. Sharon?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Shondor?
Yes.
Amy Cohen?
Yes.
Amy Vessels?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Myself, yes, and Maureen?
Yes.
Excellent. Thanks, everyone. Thanks again, Emery, for all that hard work. Really appreciate it. All right, everybody, our last, um. Certainly not least vote that we're gonna take tonight is on the final superintendent evaluation. So the composite evaluation, excuse me, is in your meeting materials. This is an object. Of Mike's hard work, taking all of our evaluations and bringing them all together. I would like to turn it over to our chairperson of the Personnel Subcommittee, Mike Horish, as he is the expert here. Mike? Walk us through, uh, this process before we take the motion and vote.
Sure. Um, first of all, we got, uh, very good representation this year, so, uh, I think we had ten out of eleven. So it was, um. Uh, you know, of course, it, it feels better to write a composite report that is most representative of the committee. Um, so I appreciate everyone's effort to get the, um. Um, there are evaluations in them, even if they were a day or two late, that's fine. Um, uh, if you've read through the composite, you'll notice that, um. Um, there were, I, I referenced two perspectives. One was the perspective of the school committee, and when I referenced the, the term school committee. What that meant was that the majority of evaluations felt in that particular way. The school committee feels, or the school committee noted that. And that just meant that in your evaluations, if I noticed commonalities, then I. Describe it as the school committee. And then as per our conversation in our last meeting. When there were not just dissenting views, but specific, um, recommendations or requests or thoughts. Um, you'll note that I, I wrote, uh, something to the effect of, um. Individual committee members or individual members. Um, I, um. The way that, the way that this process worked for me anyways, the way that it made sense to me was I printed out everything. Summarized everybody's, um, commentary on each of the goals and each of the standards. Uh, and each of the, uh, each of the composites. Um, and then I really tried to stitch them all together using as much of. Your original language as possible. So the way that I thought about this is that if every person who responded. Um, had a font in a certain color, the final product would be this big rainbow of colors because I just. A- as much as I could, just copied and pasted. It was really important to me that your perspectives and your voice was, um, represented. Um. Also, the, um. Um, the composite, which is, uh, you know, kind of an important piece. Um, you'll note that, um, the way that, uh, this resulted mathematically, I mean, the way that I did this was that every. Rating had a value. I, I, I averaged the values and assigned a final. Um, and you'll notice that the, uh, the final evaluation. Um. Was exemplary, uh, and that is admittedly, um, relatively rare for a second-year superintendent. Um, and I feel fine with it because it really represented what the, um. What the collective evaluations said. Um, but it is probably worth having a brief discussion as to whether we are comfortable assigning, um. An exemplary as the, uh, overall rating. And I, I would also say that if, um, and. To Leah, if, if we're okay having this discussion, um, I would say that you are certainly welcome to. And you should feel comfortable. Saying that you don't feel that exemplary is appropriate, but you can also feel that even if you didn't rate, uh, on your individual. Evaluation exemplary, that you are comfortable with assigning an exemplary, um, as part of the composite. I think that that's probably only fair. Um, and I, I did have a brief discussion, um, with the superintendent about this, so this isn't anything that's coming as a surprise. Um, I think it's probably in the interest of being, uh, clear about how we all felt as a committee about the performance of the superintendent. Um, and through the support of his team.
Uh, so thanks, Mike, uh, for that clarification, but also a very quick thank you to you for doing this work. I know that you pour your heart into things like this because you take it very seriously and, and you know how important it is. It's one of the goals that we set out for the Personnel Subcommittee, and I think that we exceeded that goal under your leadership here. So really appreciate all of your hard work. Um, it's no small task to bring together ten opinions on a multifaceted evaluation. So uh, the things that you wrote, just from my perspective, the way that you crafted, so first of all, you're a lovely writer. But I just love how you were able to assign the opinions to various members, not by name, but just to help us understand that there were, there was com- there was complexity in the individual evaluations, but I think that you really did serve the spirit of this exercise in bringing them all together. And I hope that the rest of the committee feels that way. Um, I am, I am fairly certain that this is uh, accurate of what I think. I do want to have a brief conversation about the overall evaluation because that is ultimately um, what is not important, but it is the, that is the rating that is submitted to the Department of Education. And so um, otherwise, they don't, they don't get to read all of the fantastic things. They really only see the rating, and not that anybody looks at it, but it's on file. So we want to make sure that it is what we believe, and as a group, we will eventually take a vote on this. Um, in this discussion, we can have, in this public conversation, we have the power to change the evaluation that Mike has um, completed if we want to, or we can vote for, we can just keep it as is. So I'd like to open the floor to the members, and you guys can weigh in if you think you want to in any way. Scott?
So I'd just like to know with regard to the um, overall evaluation, did a majority of the members rate him exemplary?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other comments? Amy Vessels?
Um, I just want to say that um, I think that that my comfort with this is really going to come to a matter of like, how much is done next year on curriculum assessment? Um, I feel like that is, that should be a real priority. Uh, I'm sure it will be, but that's particularly around assessment. Um, I'm going to be definitely looking to see um, a lot accomplished in that area, I guess I would say.
Mike?
Yeah, I will um, I will say that, you know, that it was considerable amount of overlap in the things that we were addressing in the evaluation with respect to goals and standards and indicators. Um, and that was a theme, that was a theme that came up that had probably had the most level of variability. Um, I think everyone did a uh, uh, made it very clear that the efforts that were uh, taken to fulfill the curriculum work this year were, was outstanding. Um, there was a difference of opinion on the work of assessments. Um, and from a personal level, and I think you'll probably figure out where my, my own voice got into the composite. It felt to me like assessments wasn't explicitly part of this part of the goal. It felt like to me it was curriculum work. Um, it was developing these plans and developing um, these um, these these reviews, but assessment would be kind of a future plan. I, I think I tried to capture that in there. So if we're talking about this year, um, and this isn't with a standard because there was a standard that did specifically talk about assessment. But the uh, student learning goal, I believe, um, I don't think had language of assessment, and I wouldn't want to fault um, the superintendent for not achieving something that wasn't explicit to the goal. And that's my personal opinion um, on that matter. So I, I fully appreciate that, and there were others that expressed a similar opinion, but that's my perspective.
Anyone else want to weigh in? Amy?
Yeah, I, I kind of want to echo um, and build on what's been said. So I, I think that what we just heard is a little bit of the tension that exists between the form that Desi provides us and the strategic goal that we set, a strategic plan that we adhere to and how they don't always line up. Um, and for me, that was part of the challenge with doing, with completing the evaluation is trying to fit the work that's been done into the, the categories that Desi sets out. Um, and I, I just, you know, I sent Mike an email after I submitted my um, my evaluation to try to capture that sentiment because I feel like the form is set up to evaluate very specific things that don't necessarily capture the essence of the long-term strategic planning work that's been done. And I think um, that if you look at it from a longer-term viewpoint, that the exemplary rating is appropriate because all the work that's been done this year is building towards a larger strategic vision. And you know, it's building blocks that are setting us up for success in the future. So um, so I, I'm, I support the way that Mike's um, framed the overall evaluation um, of the superintendent's work. And, and I appreciate how he broke out the school committee's point of view and also highlighted individual members' points of view. And I, I just want to commend him on putting together an excellent compilation because I, and I, I know that it required a lot of his time. Um, and so, thank you, Mike.
Thanks, Amy. Over to Mike.
Um, I'm just going to add to what Amy said. Um, the language coming from Desi's standards and indicators is very specific and can be kind of klugey at times. And if given the option between um, doing the work in order to meet the language of the standard or doing the work in order to meet the language of the strategic plan, um, I would far prefer the latter.
Thanks, Mike. Any further comment? Maureen?
So on goal number two, it in the cumulative, it says met. That's the all curriculum in grade six through twelve will be developed, aligned and mapped, but that's not exactly complete right now, right? So how can we say that that's been met?
Yeah, Mike, go right ahead.
I'm sorry. Um, I think there was also a um, difference of opinion, if I'm reading between the lines, that should the superintendent um, have provided the full suite of documents um, as part of evidence or just samples of evidence? Um, and the way that I personally did mine was that he provided samples of pieces of evidence without necessarily providing a document that was just all exhaustive, um, um, outward-facing evidence. So that's, that's where I made um, my measurements. And I think there's, there needs to be probably more clarity there, but um, there was a little bit of a tension there.
Maureen, is that hand still up?
Um, no, I can, I can put it down, but, but I thought we just discussed earlier today that the plan, the, the curriculum reviews aren't complete because even in some of the samples provided today, there's, there's missing pieces. So I don't, I don't think it's done yet, but it's going to be done before, the plan is to have it done before September to be parent-facing.
Hmm. Shondor, uh, uh, so I, what I, I just don't, I don't want to gloss over what Maureen just said. I think that Maureen has put something on the table there that she's seeing. Uh, it feels like a glitch to her. Um, so that's on the table. Now I'm going to go to Shondor. We're not forgetting it, but maybe Shondor is building on it or going in a different direction. It's up to you, Shondor.
Uh, unfortunately, no. Uh, different potential glitch. Um, I'm seeing in goal five sort of a disconnect between the written comment and the cumulative score because the written comment ends with the school committee also acknowledges that the work required to make greater progress towards the goal is ongoing and is centered around increasing awareness uh, on the new focus on DEI, but considerable work must be completed in this area before the goal can truly be rated as met. And yet we're rating the goal as met. That, that doesn't seem to align with.
Yeah, that, yeah, um, so I, I'll, I'll, I'll speak to that. Um, the, the language actually um, came from an individual, and I think what you see is that it was listed as school committee, but it was language taken right from a specific individual. So I think that there, so just, just to be clear, the rating system was really just a mathematical ranking. And so it, it was, there were some people that said that it was exceeded, and some people said that it wasn't quite met, and met is where it landed in terms of an average. So if we need to change the language to an individual member, um, um, uh, believes that considerable work not, must be completed in order for the goal to be truly as rated as met, we can do that. It's fine.
Okay, so that else is on the table. Uh, Sharon?
So um, I guess what I'm thinking of applies to both uh, Maureen's comment and also um, Shondor's. I think that one of the things that is difficult or that I found difficult with the rating scale is that it's trying to peg or pigeonhole something into a very specific place, but it doesn't ref- it doesn't take into account the enormity of the work that's been done. And to me, when, when I look at, at all of these different um, standards or indicators or, or goals, um, what I thought a lot about was not necessarily the um, like the letter of the law for what makes it significant progress or met um, or exceeded, but more the, looking at the enormity of the work that has been done and how far um, we have come in a very short time. And that was um, and, and that might have been me that said there's always more work to be done. That's the reality of what we do. That's, that's part of learning. That's part of any work that we're doing is that there will always be more to do. But when you look at where we were one year ago and where we are now, the difference is night and day. And, and that to me have more heavily influenced my ratings and the way I thought about those ratings more than the letter of what does this say? I hope that made sense.
Thanks very much for that. So to more, just, I wanted to add to Maureen's comment. Um, you guys know that this is the drum I beat around curriculum and, and assessment, and I think that I put made significant progress in my evaluation. I think that there has been significant progress made in the writing of curriculum. And I'm so grateful for all of that. Um, but I, I, I am in agreement with Maureen. I don't think that it's all done yet. And I know that with a few of the social studies maps that were provided in the evidence, they were all, they were missing stage three, which is a part of the curriculum map and actually an integral one. Um, so I found the curriculum maps to be a wonderful work in progress, and I am not knocking any of it. I think that the, I think it's ambitious to try to do any of the, this sort of overhaul in a year. Um, so whereas I agree with Maureen that I think that that, I personally think that that should be moved to making significant progress, I am not opposed to keeping the overall rating at exemplary. And so that would be my only glitch, and, and therefore, because I know that the final rating is the one that gets logged, I actually, I would not make a fuss over it, but I do want to just put on the record, and Kirk knows this, and Laura does as well, how I feel. And Amy Vessel said it earlier. I think that there's so much work to be done, especially at the secondary level around um, instructional strategy and, and assessment method and creating feedback loops for the kids so that they can be reflective learners who continually make progress. And so that is, that is the drum I beat. It is the thing I care about most. It is something that I know all of the people in this Zoom call care about as well. It's something that I know all of the teachers want to do well. Um, and so I see significant progress being made down that road, and I'm super grateful for it because um, we have the, the right leaders at the table, and we have all of these teachers who are fantastic and capable and willing. So I look forward to it. I don't necessarily think personally that I need anything to change here tonight, but I did want that to go on the record. Uh, so I see Amy Cohen's here.
Thanks. I, I think this also relates to the fact that when the goals were set for the year, that the school committee acknowledged how ambitious Kirk's goals were, and that he was laying out a ton of work. And I believe that, that there was even some um, discussion of throwing caution to these goals as being too much to take on in one year. So I think that part of what we're seeing is that, and I think that Kirk responded by saying, I'd rather shoot for the moon and, you know, not quite make it, then set my, my, my goals um, lower than that and exceed them. So I think this is part of, of what we're seeing here is that, that the goals that were set were, were truly very, very ambitious and maybe not attainable within one year. And so that is part of the, the issue that I was having with the ratings on the Desi form is that um, you know, if you read the i- if you're rating it according to how Desi asks you to rate it, then it is hard to say something other than um, making significant progress on the curriculum goal that Kirk set for himself and that we agreed to. Um, but I think the way that Leah said it is that, because in my, my um, individual assessment also kind of showed um, making significant progress or needing improvement in this area, but I would also, I've already gone on record saying that I would overall give an exemplary rating. And it has to do with the fact that the goals were just way, very, very ambitious.
Thanks, Amy. All right. So I wonder i- is there any further comment? Anything that you would want altered? Sharon?
Sorry, I just had to add into there that I agree that the, that the superintendent deserves nothing less than an exemplary um, rating for an overall rating.
Thanks, Sharon. All right, I'm not seeing any more hands. So we are going to um, look for a motion, and I wonder, Mike, can you give that to us?
Yes, I can. Um, all right, so I'll move to approve the composite, the Shiloh Regional um, School Committee summative superintendent evaluation report as presented. The overall summative performance of exemplary will be reported to Desi.
I'll second that. Any further discussion? All right, thanks, everyone. Uh, let's take the vote. Mike?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Scott?
Yes.
Shondor?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
Karen?
Yeah.
Amy Vessels?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Maureen?
Yes.
Amy Cohen?
Yes.
That is unanimous. Superintendent Downing, you are exemplary leader of our district, and we so appreciate you and your whole team for everything you do.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I'm, I'm, I'm humble, and we know we have um, a lot of work to do, as, as you and I spoke about in one of our meetings. I live in a world of in one of our meetings. I live in a world of significant progress. Uh, I mean, I think that's just, if we're not always thinking about how to get better, if we ever get satisfied with met, then we've stopped learning. We should always be in a mindset of significant progress so that we can continue to carry on. So thank you for that and thank you for your support to everyone tonight.
Great. Mike, thanks so much for that. Hero status right now.
Thanks to all of you for submitting, for being so diligent about submitting it. It's um, far more impactful when you have so many voices that are compiled together.
Yeah. Um, all right, guys, we're moving on to our subcommittee reports and we are going to start with you, Mike, budget and warrant.
Um, things have slowed down in budget warrants since um, the uh, I guess unofficial end of the budget season, but we are now focusing on um, um, our operations reports and of course the OPEP advisory. Um, we are hoping to get a final committee count. Um, and then um, o- offer a uh, membership to the broader school committee uh, after it gets reviewed at the budget warrant committee. So we'll be, we'll be meeting, I think on the 12th, I think. I could be wrong, but we'll be meeting somewhere in the first half of the month.
Awesome. Thanks, Mike. Over to communication and Sharon?
No report.
Great. Over to the school building committee and Joe.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chairman. The uh, school building committee met on May 17th and uh, the committee was presented with its first look at the estimated project budget for the new high school. Uh, the figure that was presented to the building committee was 241 million, 714,926 dollars with a possible $2 million offset if the town of Bolton opts to waive permitting fees. Uh, the OPM has also built in some other possible deductions which will be discussed at the building committee's next meeting on May 31st. Uh, as the members of this committee under note that um, that evening, we will be having a joint meeting with the building committee subsequent to our 6:00 PM meeting. I just want to put everyone on notice this evening that um, the link, the Zoom link for the meeting will be the building committee meeting. So I will be sending out a um, an email reminder with the building committee link uh, for the meeting on the 31st. We anticipate the meeting will be about 45 minutes, perhaps an hour, but we're, we're, I believe, Madam Chair, you're scheduling the uh, subsequent meeting of the school committee and the building committee for a 6:45 PM start. Um, and I think that is about it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Excellent. Thanks, Joe. Because that pertains to the whole committee. Is everybody cool with that? Everybody understands what's going on on the 31st?
Uh, one last thing, Madam Sharon. Um, with the email, the communication I will send out, I will send each member the uh, estimated project budget. Don't worry, it's only a page long. So take a look at it and be prepared to uh, vote on this uh, next week. Thank you.
And can I just jump in to say that there's going to be a public forum um, on June 14th? Once the school committee approves that budget, right? The idea is to present it to the public for comment and and not comment, but just uh, present it, get it out there, seek feedback.
Well, the forum's going to go forward whether we approve the budget or not. So um, yes, we have a public forum scheduled for the 14th. But uh, the chronology of events will be that we as a committee will look to approve the project budget based on the presentment of our OPM and design team on the 31st, at which time we will then present the approved budget, uh, approved uh, project budget as voted upon by the district committee at the form of the 14th. In speaking to the OPM, you know, nothing that we do as a committee is ever final. So um, if there are further adjustments to be made, they can be made in advance of June 27th, which is our deadline for submission of our preferred schematic design or the schematic design and the project budget. Um, but again, the OPM believes that what they are presenting is a solid and firm number. It is slightly higher than uh, what we had originally anticipated, but there are some available avenues to reduce this budget uh, if necessary. And just to hammer this point home, uh, with the document you'll be receiving along with my email will show that the estimated uh, district share was going to be somewhere between 175 and 185 million dollars when we started this project. Right now, our OPM is estimating that the district share will be 176 million, 579,096 dollars. So I would say that uh, the OPM and uh, our design team has basically put this right into the wheelhouse of what we had originally presented. So hopefully this will um, we will not have to go through some, any significant backflips in order to uh, provide a final project budget to the MSBA on the 27th of June. Thank you, Madam Sharon.
Awesome. Sharon, you have a hand up?
I just want to make sure that I understand what the meeting schedule is for next week. So there's, the meeting starts at six and it's the school building committee link for the meeting.
School committee will, school, the school building committee meeting will start at 6:00 PM.
Okay.
Joint meeting of the district committee and the building committee is scheduled to start at approximately 6:45 PM. We don't anticipate there being a significant amount of deliberation on the final vote for the project budget. So we're moving the um, uh, I, the chair, I believe, has granted leave to start the uh, meeting a little bit earlier. Uh, and uh, we're hoping to get a, a approval from the district committee on the project budget next uh, Wednesday at about 6:45 PM. So you can come, come, come for six o'clock if you'd like, but the district committee will be convening at 6:45.
The joint meeting starts at 6:45 and that is on the regular school committee link?
No.
No.
I will send, I will send out an email.
Okay.
It's on the agenda. Uh, Alita has uh, put a big fat red arrow right there on the agenda showing us that which link you're going to. Uh, we're doing this for uh, ease of segueing from one meeting to the other and for recording purposes. So
Okay.
I will send out an email to, and I actually waited on this until Ms. Masterson had posted the agenda. I will send out an email probably tonight, no later than tomorrow morning with the uh, school building committee link and a reminder to all members to join Zoom, join the Zoom meeting using that link at 6:45 PM or come at six if you'd like. And I will also send along the project budget.
Thank you.
So much, Joe. Awesome. So moving on to personnel, Mike, anything uh, extra to share?
Um, quite frankly, no.
Done enough, man. You've done enough. Uh, let's hear from Policy. That's Karen.
Policy met on May 11th. I unfortunately was detained at work, but I know that um, the committee was working on just tying up the loose ends on the school committee manual that uh, the work we had done so far this year. But if Amy or Sharon or Shondor wants to add in there, feel free, because I wasn't actually present.
It'll be good? All right. Thanks for keeping on working on that, guys. Uh, let's go over to our advisory committees. Anything, Maureen, from audit advisory?
Just that they're going to have a meeting to, with the auditors once the final audit report is issued.
Any idea when that is?
It should be soon. They're, they were expecting end of May, so.
Yeah, we just received our draft. Um, and yeah, we should have a final one within, I think, a week or so.
Awesome. Thanks for that. Uh, anything from Dear J, Sharon, beyond what we heard tonight?
No, I think they covered it pretty much earlier with, with their presentation.
Great. And Karen, obviously same thing. Anything else for CPAC?
Nothing to add. They did a great job.
All right, RAC guys, I am so excited to tell you that all three towns have voted in favor of our amended agreement. There uh, were actually very few questions and it, it sailed through. So I think all the hard work of the subcommittee, of the advisory committee and um, the transparency that I think was infused into the processes is really uh, done us, done us uh, well here. So the amended agreement is um, sent to the, to the Department of Ed and we're waiting on the commissioner's approval. Once that happens, it will be official and it will replace the old one. So more on that to come. Uh, for I, for the next agenda, I have the planning calendar up. And our next meeting obviously is on the 31st. We've already said that a couple of times and the 31st is really all dedicated to the um, MSBA process. So that will, the joint meeting will perhaps uh, not last terribly long. So we'll see you there and I look forward to Joe's email. June 7th is uh, the meeting after that and that will be our organizational meeting. And so May 31st will actually be the last meeting where Maureen will join us and we can talk more about that then. Um, but on the 7th, we will be having two new members come on board and I've already met with one and completed the orientation and I hope to meet with Dana Ella. So um, I met with Jackie Reiner already and I hope to meet with Dana Ellis, who is our other incoming member next week at some point to complete the orientation. So the planning calendar has all the things that we do at the organizational meeting, but please uh, reach out to me if you have questions or if anything's unclear, if you think something should be added. Uh, lastly, you can see on the planning calendar perhaps that we on the 21st have an additional meeting. This is, um, there will be an executive session as we talked about earlier tonight. Um, and then we will put some things to vote around MSBA as well. All right. So, everybody cool with the future meetings? Apparently we have one in August as well. So, more on that later. Uh, anything else for the good of the order? All right. Well, thanks for all your hard work tonight, everybody. Really appreciate it. I am going to move to adjourn. Can I get a second?
Second.
I think Mike got that one. Good job, Mike. And I'll take the vote. I'm going to vote yes. Uh, Sharon?
Yes.
Shondor?
Yes.
Karen?
Yeah.
Scott?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Amy Cohen?
Yes.
Amy Vessels?
Yes.
Maureen?
Yes.
And Joe?
Yes.
All right, guys. Good time. See you later.